Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're good on our minutes. Oh, we've got two public hearings tonight. One is for the final plan on the Prairie Willow Estate. Before I open the public meeting, Teresa, do we have anything to add to this conversation?
So, I did receive a letter from the city engineer today, which was in front of you. So, it's one dated March thirteenth, twenty seventeen, which is not in your packet. And this is the WHKS recommendation for approval of the plant and final flat, conditional upon the above items being addressed and resubmitted, which is in addition to the recommendation recommended with conditions of approval that was in your packet. So, we kind of have two documents we'll have to slide together to make that all work.
With that said, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anybody in the gallery has anything they'd like to comment on, please come up to the podium, give one to your name and address, please.
Hi. My name's David Martin. I'm with Massey, Leo Surveying, the engineer on the project. I did receive the comment letter from WHKS and the markups. Had discussions with the client and the, um, we'll abide by the recommendations and the comments. If you have any other questions, let me know.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to contribute? In that case, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Well, gentlemen, it's on to us. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to contribute to the conversation?
I do have, I do have a comment, actually, regarding the recommended with conditions of approval that was in your packet. Mr. Bigelow has asked that the association documents be required prior to building permit application instead of at final flat. He needs some time to work out the details of the association documents for the townhome.
Anything else? In that case, I would look for a motion to approve the final plan with all related conditions.
I make that motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Second? Have a motion, have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's ended. Good night, evening. This is the public hearing for preliminary plan on the left subdivision. Again, before we open this up, Teresa, do you have any comments to add?
Yes, the engineer provided markups on the flats this afternoon, which are in front of you. And then in relation to the recommended with conditions of approval that's in your packet, on that final item, private pond or dedicated storm pond, he has indicated on his markup that that would be a temporary pond. So, I will make that change to temporary pond.
What's a temporary pond?
The idea is that this entire region would have a stormwater plan in the future if there were to be future development, essentially that farmland, if the farmlands to the east should be included. And there's a stream that goes through that farmland in a place where water starts to pool naturally. And the engineer's thinking is that should there be future development in that area, the storm pond would actually be created in the other, on the other parcel. So, this serves temporarily until there's more development.
So, with this plat, as it's drawn here, with the unplanted section in the southeast corner, how would they handle that drainage going to the north? Would they trench that? Because it looks like it's about an eight-foot drop in that southeast corner. Otherwise, it's all going to run into that hangland.
Yeah, David, can you help on that a little bit?
Shed some light on this.
Or maybe open the hearing and then David can.
We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you would be kind enough, again, to indulge us with your name and address.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Brandon and I had some discussion on Friday in regards to his comments. He mentioned in regards to temporary pond because he feels that there'll be a permanent pond to our east. And then what'll happen with our pond will, it will get filled in at that point in time. We'll convert it into a buildable lot. And then our stormwater management then will be conveyed via pipe to the east to the new regional pond. So, as far as grading goes, it won't change significantly, but there will be some reworking of some pipes and some regrading and things like that to get our water to the east. So, I do have some additional things to work out with Brandon in regards to a few of his comments. I left a message for him today, but we didn't get to discuss it. But those are some engineering items that will work out this week prior to submission of the construction plans.
So, that's in the future, but.
The regional pond?
And, yeah, in the, in the near future, if this was to be taken care of, how do you get any of the runoff of this unplanted going north? That's, that was my question.
Of the outlot B?
Yeah, this un, this section right here.
The unplanted lot?
This unplanted, you know, it's got a significant drop. How do you get that water to go north?
You're not seeing the grading. I have, we are proposing a lotline swale here.
Okay.
And then a swale along the northerly property line that evades the water of the pond.
All right.
And then the swale along our east line, a lot two, that evades it to a flare-in section and takes it to the pond. That's, yeah, that's my question. Thank you.
So, if I'm to understand this right, then this temporary pond is something that you're, because you can't guarantee you're going to get anything to the east to put in.
Correct. We need this now to, to do our subdivision to meet city ordinance and then also MPDS requirements. So, that's the purpose of the temporary pond. And the pond will be owned and maintained by Matt Laff, the owner app.
Okay, but just to keep in mind that, you know, just temporary could be permanent, depending upon who buys that.
Correct. Who knows what could happen with that property?
You don't get along with somebody.
I think you just assume that it was temporary, but it kind of depends on.
Right.
The, if the development ever happens east.
Correct.
Because that's where the pond moves to. I might not keep my lifetime.
Right.
The, the purpose of it is.
Put it out there that, you know, depend upon who develops that, if it gets developed, like you said. And you might be stuck with that pond for.
Correct.
For a while.
Yeah.
It may be, be nice to see a corrected plan elevation before we go too far.
It'll be, well, that'll be on the, in the construction plans. Yeah. Do you have any more questions?
Any additional comments from the public hearing? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing.
Um, this was recommended for approval with conditions that are listed in the handout.
Gentlemen, unless there's any more thoughts on the matter, I guess I'd be looking for a motion to approve preliminary plan.
What?
Quick, please.
No, I'm trying to find, what's this going to be zoned at?
C M right now.
C M?
Well, no, C, it's C three.
This is one.
The C three right now.
C three, yeah. The thirty-foot buffer yard, you know, does that fall along with the setbacks?
Yes, but it sounds like you're putting in a swale that probably serves the same.
Correct.
Yes. Serves the same purpose.
Along our east line?
So.
South line.
Up line?
Well, we have no swale along our south line.
Oh, okay. So, the south line will need a buffer yard.
So, is that, I'm wondering, does that follow in the setbacks for that property?
C three.
C three?
Yeah.
Thirty-foot setback in there?
Yep. Thirty-foot should be required in the side or rear.
Look at you.
I got, I grabbed the whole one.
Oh. Well, I think Dwayne has it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, another question. I want to make sure that those are falling each other in. I still have.
I'll move to approve the preliminary plat, or the, yeah, preliminary plat with conditions as outlined and appears in the packet and discussed with the engineers.
Got a motion, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Motion, we've got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, last one, gentlemen. We were asked to entertain a rezon request here on the north side of the town. Teresa, I believe we cabled it so that the city can be a little bit more humble.
Right. And you have a, a letter from the city attorney that's in your packet. Yeah, the problem that, um, Sheldon had.
I've read it, Martin, all of my time.
I, I, I haven't.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you did, yes. Okay, all right.
My attorneys, did Michael have any?
Right.
What'd they say?
Hi, I'm Rich Massey from Massey's Answering. No, I never saw this till now, but I think we all know really that probably what's going to happen is there'll be a road on the west side of that property that'll hook into Sixteenth Street. That's kind of what it sounds like for most people. But how can he do that until somebody has the right of way there? I guess that's what, it wouldn't do him any good right now to build a road on the backside of that property down to where the imaginary Sixteenth Street is. I mean, you know, this is, this property's been, it was planted, I don't know when, in the sixties or something. There's been general development plans out there since nineteen seventy-four. You read through that MINDOT letter from two thousand and three. They don't want all this traffic on Fifty-Seven. They want some more north-south roads to connect and then just hit Fifty-Seven in a few spots. So, we're kind of wondering, how soon is the city castle going to do this? You know, I mean, it's.
Well, Rich, for me, the, in addition to the comments are made here.
Yeah.
The one piece of information that we're missing is still the recommendation from MINDOT, a current recommendation from MINDOT as far as access on the Twenty-Second Street that you were asking about. We still don't have that.
Yeah, I understand.
So, you know, prior to, for me, prior to agreeing to anything, I need to know what MINDOT is going to be willing to do, which is going to then help guide us on what we're going to do on Fifty-Seven. For me, if, if they're going to allow access to the west off of Twenty-Second into that area that we were talking about, now we're talking two roundabouts. One there at Twenty-Second, one, probably a second one at Sixteen. They handle the school, the church, and everything else that's coming out of that. So, I need that guidance from MINDOT before I'm ready to make any decision on this. That could probably happen sooner than the extension of Sixteen. I don't know where the city is on the extension all the way over to Twenty-One, but, or is it Twenty-One?
Three-One, fifteen. No.
No.
Oh, Twenty-One going left.
Dump road.
Yeah.
I'll just refer to the dump road. So, that's where I sit with it. I, I acknowledge the attorney's position. I'll leave it at that.
Well, that's just, that's my point. I mean, the landfill owns the property to the west.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not going to be residential in anybody's lifetime.
Right.
Unless, you know, whatever. So, then you have the two residences and then two trucking companies. And the one is zoned, our, their C three, the other one's our lot, I guess. So, I don't know that you're really meeting any of your zoning guidelines right now anyway.
Yeah, see, and our zoning guidelines is following what we've had set for a policy is that any annexed property has to come in at the highest density. And I'm sure back in two thousand and three or whatever, when we did the general development plan, just for the ease of getting it set up, Mr. Radell followed the residential guidelines.
Well, he was actually thinking about doing residential at that time.
I think both you and I can agree that having residential next to that landfill probably isn't the best.
No, you're right. That's exactly right.
Yeah.
Then I had, did have another side question, kind of, that, you know, your R C, S C M, whatever's going on with the law, storage buildings. So, I was kind of curious, how come clearly over here on the C three, how they get storage buildings over there?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to you. I was not here when those were put in.
Just not a question I don't get answers to. I'm sorry. I mean, so, I guess the bottom line is, you know, some of us will be dead in fifteen years or whatever. But I'd like to see the city start being progressive here pretty soon so this man can, you know, he's, would like to develop some of that. He's got a buyer for two and a half acres. It'd even be nice if he could at least get one access. I mean, just use them existing accesses where they are, build a road up past Toons, whatever, so he can get some storage buildings going and all that. But just a temporary, you know, with conditions that nothing else can happen until something does happen.
So, can I ask?
Sure.
What's the procedure to get that changed from residential to commercial that he has?
Right. So, so you are going into a new comprehensive planning process? So, it could be that your new comprehensive plan lays out a different highest investment for that property, and that could be your opportunity to make a change to your zoning map at that time, depending on the outcome of your comprehensive planning process?
So, we're still talking ways out before that kind of decision gets made?
Right.
I mean, in reality, I knew that, but, you know, he came to me in December. He had a buyer, they were going to close on April something pending approval of this plat, you know. Well, so I'm doing what he asked me to do, but I, I told him it's going to take a while, but. Just so far, I've just seen the tires spin into the mud, I guess, a little bit.
And with Sixteenth, we almost got to wait to find out what MINDOT does.
Yeah, that's, for me, that's the key, because if MINDOT is going to allow access at Twenty-Two, at Twenty-Second Street, then, then the chips start falling into place.
But, I mean, I'd like to see you guys really start pushing because that other property to the south of where Sixteenth Street would go, they're, you know, he's ready to do something too. So, I mean, that's, there's some tax money there to be had if you guys can get along with this.
I think this will be something I'll have, if I have a problem with.
With the rezoning?
Yeah.
Well, I think Dwayne, back in the day, we talked about that years ago, that Frontage Road was going to go through there, and we talked about that being the commercial side of the, whatever, if I remember right, right?
Well, I don't know if we talked about being the Frontage Road with the residential properties there. We talked about access, but I'm not sure if frontage is probably the right term.
Right.
Uh, the, the other option is to rezone that entire area after the comprehensive plan where we identify the land use, which makes Toons and Fuchs non-conforming to a zoning change.
Right.
So, which doesn't mean that they have to vacate the property. It is just that they can't improve it then, much like we went through with the ZOMAC and the other properties next to Burger King.
Yeah, well, we've got the same restrictions on.
Yeah.
Right next door over here, Dave's too.
Yeah, yeah, so those would all be non-conforming, so, you know. I'm not sure, personally, I'm not sure if Frontage Road is right. I would much rather see Twenty-Second go in there and, and force the roundabout.
Where would Twenty-Second tie in at?
Right, I think approximately where the Catholic Church driveway is.
Yeah. I don't know if MINDOT would be all up for Frontage Road right there either.
Yeah.
Especially if they're going to do a roundabout.
Yes. To me, the smart thing is to put in two roundabouts, use Twenty-Second there and have the school reroute their tra, out, exit traffic out behind the Catholic Church and down the Catholic Church driveway to a roundabout. That way, we alleviate some of that congestion. Two roundabouts then slows that traffic down so you can get ingresses and egresses out of those. But what do I know?
Even the tough part is we have absolutely no influence on MINDOT. They are on their schedule and on their budget, so.
Yeah.
And to hold a, a castle landowner hostage to that, I, I, that's too extreme a word to use, but.
Do we have a direct phone number for anybody at MINDOT to start having?
Well, we, there are a couple of meetings. One I indicated when I was available today to meet with MINDOT regarding the, their project, their improvement project on Highway Fifty-Seven. And there's also a meeting scheduled to talk to MINDOT about the access that Mr. Radell has had to his profit.
This be coming out of Rochester or Otana?
Of Rochester. So, there are, there's one meeting scheduled and one meeting we're working on the eighth. There are, there's a couple of meetings on the horizon.
At the end of the day, it's still going to be a challenge. You've got businesses right on top of residential homes. It is going to be a transitional area, very much like what we are here now with the Clockeys and Burger King and any other businesses in the area. And even if we had a decision from MINDOT, does it have that big of an impact on our perspective as to how to rezone that area? I mean, landfill's not going anywhere. I'm assuming residential homes aren't going anywhere. I'm assuming the trucking company isn't going anywhere. So, even if, if the people currently living there, running those businesses leave, chances are they're going to continue to be occupied by some sort of comparable entity. I'm trying to understand what the downside is with approving the reason. It's the same challenge regardless of MINDOT's decision. How do you balance out the interest of these competing zones?
Other than it's not consistent with the land use plan that we have in our comp plan.
Yeah, but it's not now. And I'm not exactly sure what the comprehensive, the last comprehensive plan we said. Like, my memory isn't that good, but I do remember commercial development being part of that quarter. And I thought, and again, I may be wrong on this, that the only reason these things are currently zoned are one is because of the adaptation, not because of what comprehensive plans are. But I may very well be wrong on this point.
Typically, when the annex is coming, it's a hard one.
Yeah.
Um, there, there, if you have your comprehensive plan handy, um, I think some of the language has to do with the proximity to the school. So, that would be where it would currently, that, that current zoning would fit with your comprehensive plan would be that your comprehensive plan is asking that you think about modes of transportation, accessibility of schools, and that kind of thing. So, your new comprehensive plan then would inform a decision about how it would be zoned in light of today's conditions, but in light of what the community was looking for at the time. Residential does fit. You have the old old comp plan.
I do. You've got two thousand and eleven.
That's the latest. Yeah.
I guess the question I had is if the requested, the requested zone is CM, uh, which is kind of the question that's proposed tonight. If that is, and that's really the question that the property is on this case, um, listed in the attorney's letter is citing that as spot rezoning. Would it be more appropriate zoned to consider it be something like a C three that's adjacent to the property that seems to be following along the corridor?
The storage units aren't allowed in the C three, only in the CM. Mostly want to mend the work. All of it is gonna take meetings and time to get everything positioned to accommodate Mr. Radell. Which is he prepared to, to put in streets if he was to put it on the back of the property? To pay for that?
I, I think, well, I mean, my ar- you don't understand, don't get. My argument would be that he shouldn't have to build it from any further than his south property line going north.
Right.
Because everybody else would be forced to use that also.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and, but I think you would, you know, the first, just getting like two and a half acres, the, the storage shares, I think you would wanna try to just build that much for now with temporary turnaround. You know, I don't know how, I mean, he would be happy if somebody just came and bought it or something like that. But, yeah, cause he's getting older, I don't think he wants to do this stuff anymore. So, but he wants to do something with his life, you know. So. And I think once you get somebody older, stuff will happen. This is the main reason why I proposed it the way it is, cause that's the only option we have right now.
Yeah, yeah. But a, a rezone would not exclude Mr. Radell from having to come back with an acceptable general development plan. So.
Yes, I don't understand. If all the transportation plan I had, I don't know what's not acceptable about it. The thing that's not acceptable is you guys don't have any streets there like you want. But I can't pretend that they're there.
But Mr. Less is putting in a street to be able to develop.
On his own land.
Right.
Why should Mr. Radell have to put in a street of his south property line down to the south where Sixteenth Street is? And you're gonna force foots, cutting jams and Toons to booze that road?
Okay.
Why didn't he build that road today? He doesn't own the land. How's he gonna acquire it?
Aside from that, but, so that was, that was an attempt to try to assist Mr. Radell, you know, with an idea of what might be acceptable in a general development plan. But is not saying that's the only way it would have to happen. Mr. Radell could certainly come back with another proposal for a general development plan. But the general development plan that was submitted was rejected essentially. So, so re- having the property rezoned does not preclude Mr. Radell from having to come with an acceptable general development plan and will not necessarily automatically make it possible for him to sell off two and a half acres for storage units. It would still, it still require a general development plan.
And basically, right now, he can't sell anything the way, the stand that you take. He cannot sell anything until he builds Sixteenth Street and whatever that street's gonna be running north and south.
Well, he could bring, he could bring in a general development plan that would be acceptable. That, that was an attempt to provide some additional information that might assist with the general development plan. That was not sudden stone. This is the only way it would ever be developed. It was an attempt.
What I'm having an issue with is you're showing two fictitious streets. Okay? He has access to Highway fifty-seven. It's a planted right away in front of him and then there's Highway fifty-seven. So in my opinion, the only access he has or he can show right now is either going to the south on that access road or coming out on fifty-seven.
Okay.
I mean, it's kind of presumptive to, to say, okay, here, let's build this street, let's build this street, even though it's just a pie in the sky thing.
Well, I'm saying he could come back with a general development plan that this body could review.
Cause it shows that access on fifty-seven.
But it's not, uh, it doesn't show serving those properties with that sixty-six foot right of way.
Which properties?
And, and the lots that he's divided out there. It doesn't show serving them with, with the sixty-six foot right of way.
Is that, that, that's your name?
Providing a turnaround. Well, that would be in the subdivision in CM zoning regulations.
And then I'll just jog back in and get my Toons back.
Uh, I'm not offering anything else because obviously what we offered has created some animosity. So I will not offer anything.
Okay.
At this time. But I'll say that's all it was, was an offer. It was an offer to try to assist in visualizing how the general development plan could meet the zoning requirement. That's all.
Do we have a map? Is, is that driveway, the Foot and Toon driveway, is that a planted street?
There is an eighteenth street that is planted.
That goes east and west. I'm talking about the one that's running north and south along the highway.
Yeah, that's a planted forty foot or fifty foot, whatever. It's forty foot in there.
That's a planted street?
It's, yeah, it's called.
Well, it's not.
It's a planted street.
Yeah, but it does not, it would not serve as a street for.
It's called West Manorville Drive.
Yeah. So it, but it would not.
It's on the castle.
Meet, it does not meet the definition of a street or the purpose of, of the, um.
Keep me honest on this point, all because I am somewhat paraphrased and I don't wanna read things out. But from the comprehensive plan, the city recognizes the importance of a strong, vibrant, diverse common, economy department. A majority of the current commercial land use designation is located within the city's downtown core. Future commercial areas of various sizes will probably develop along Highway fifty-seven within the city. With the high traffic counts along fifty-seven, new retail and commercial businesses will desire to locate on this corridor. So I don't think we're throwing the comprehensive plan out the window by considering a rezone on this. But, again, I've taken a snippet on about much more than that.
And then, um, C three is your highway commercial zoning.
We're stuck between rock and hard place. Uh, I agree with Tom. I don't know that we are locked into not rezoning this, cause I think we probably can agree that it's next to the landfill, residential as current, isn't the right zoning. But I just assume rezone it to be compliant with the land use plan that's being discussed it with updating a comprehensive plan. Um, to address the nebulous language that's currently in the comprehensive plan, I, I think we can address that. And we're doing that with commercial. We've had other entities look at commercial property such as Casey's looking next to the Animal Hospital. Um, you know, I agree with Rick. So there's probably good opportunities for growth there. We can a- address the, the school issue with residential and everything to the north, to the east and to the south of the school. We've already done that. We can continue to do that. But on the west side at Highway fifty-seven, in between fifty-seven and the landfill, may more of a commercial or mixed use district is the most appropriate.
Well, you know, and the quarry's gonna grow.
Yeah.
Coy, what do you think? I, I need to hear from some experience.
Well, the biggest thing that I see is the two residences, what we're gonna do to them, like Dwayne was saying to start off with. You know, we're gonna put them between a rock and a hard place. And if we rezone the whole area, um, and this isn't, this isn't spot zoning by no means at all. Spot zoning would be to take, have it C three or whatever, and then try to change the one residence to R one. That's more considered what spot zoning is. Um, is that, I don't, I don't have an issue with the idea of which way it's gonna go as commercial, industrial out there. I mean, it fits that side of the road. It's no different than going west out of CAS and you got residents on thirty-four on the north and a house there, commercial stuff on that side. You know, we kind of always looked at that kind of same situation or buffers, that road that's kind of jumps, creates that line. And, um, I just, it's a, it's a touchy subject there with, you know, um, more on Toon than you do really see with Foot. Because, I mean, Foot ran, I think he still runs his trucking business out of his shop there. So he's just as much a commercial property as he is a residence there. So, um, I don't, I, I, I don't really see a problem with the rezoning of this. It fits the way the city's talked about it. And like I said, I believe when Dwayne and I sat together on this commission here years ago, that's kind of the way I thought the intent was. Cause I think at one point in time, we talked about, you know, instead of where twenty-two is, maybe the road was up. Cause I think somebody, I don't know if Lampin, but had an idea of having a road coming across it towards where the trees are further down. And the intersection was there. At one point in time, come out as subdivision. But I was just looking at the comp plan from back in two thousand and two. And that's kind of what it talked about was maybe a frontage road or whatever that, uh, you know, MINDOT did, limit the access on fifty-seven. So, um, I think that at one point in time, the, the south access is supposed to be where Dollar General is in the carriage house. I know we couldn't get those streets to line up, but we don't wanna have these mismatched streets, you know, like we have at, what is it, the?
Seventh.
Seventh and?
Seventh.
Fifth. The interim offset. Try, trying to avoid those. And I know we talked about that quite a bit back then. So I, I think that, uh, the idea of the change has been kind of planned that way from since I've been here. So I, I don't really see a problem with the changing of it. But I see a problem, we don't wanna have an issue with foots and Toons of limiting them.
I think her biggest issue was having them come in between the two properties, you know, with everything running around.
Well, when you have your swing set on the planted right of way, that is a concern.
I get that. But you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. I understand. I totally understand. But I think that would be, coming in on that eighteenth street, there'd probably be just one parcel there. I can't imagine, I don't know what he's got, what he's hoping to get there or whatever. But, yeah, that's, that's chunkage compared to the rest of the city.
Regarding the Frontage Road, based on this letter from two thousand and three from MINDOT, they would not approve the use of that as a frontage road because of no proximity to fifty-seven.
Yep.
So, but that was, you know, that's thirteen years ago.
But they've gotten even tighter, you know, especially with roundabouts. They don't like frontage roads.
Yeah, so.
But you understand where, where we're coming from, right?
Absolutely.
And we, this is the only option we have right now until something serves us.
Well, I agree with most, I can't see, I would hate to build a house next to the landfill and the quarry. And it just, I don't think it fits residential. I really don't. I, I agree to the northeast, south. But that piece there just does not work. But I don't know what to do.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a mess. This is not exactly a technical term. But I, I can't see heavy residential interest in that area.
No.
Because you've got a, what, a fifty mile an hour traffic patterns that have been by out there on fifty-seven. Isn't this, and the kids cross that every morning to go to school? I mean, it's just.
You'd be talking to pedestrian bridge and, and, uh, uh, even with two roundabouts, it isn't gonna slow them down that much. But I still think the main issue is the landfill and the quarry as far as throwing a house in there. Just isn't, I don't think it's right.
As I see it, I, we need a determination on MINDOT on that twentieth or twenty-second, wherever it's gonna be. If they're not willing to provide access at that point, then we're locked into what we're gonna do with Sixteenth Street. And if the city isn't in a position to extend Sixteenth Street to the back of that property line, behind, uh, cutting jams and foots, then Mr. Radell's locked. He's landlocked. Uh, we can't use the frontage road because it doesn't meet the standard that we have set for C three or CM. So we can't push that on foots or Toons. So, uh, if we don't get twentieth or twenty-second, whatever that number is for that access, then the city is gonna be on the hook to determine whether they're in a position to extend Sixteenth Street to accommodate this property. And if they're not, then there's no sense rezoning in that at this time.
Where's the water sewer gonna be feeding us?
Uh, the sewer was gonna be, I think he was just gonna put grinder pumps across to the manhole by the school, the northwest corner of the school. Just put a little forest man with grinder pumps for most. The water main, there's a hydrant, there's water main that we pour under the Highway fifty-seven, tie in the water there.
Where abouts is the, whereabouts hydrant?
Bigger drawing, your toy would be easier to see.
Is that the one by the church?
Yeah. Just on the church property.
Same two manholes right there also.
So is the next step to try to get an answer from MINDOT?
Well, I think we need, personally, I think that's what we need to do. And we have, but before we do that, we have to act on the rezon request. We tabled it. So we're, we're on the clock. So we have to either approve or deny it. I'm not sure. Or, or we could ask him to extend it. Yeah, yeah. So if he is unwilling to extend it, then I don't think we have a choice but to deny it. Cause we're not in a position to act on it until we hear from MINDOT.
Okay, so can we ask? And to ask for an extension?
We can ask.
With the understanding that we're going to try to get ahold of MINDOT to get a determination? Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Coy, that sound right? Coy, that sound right?
Yeah, no, I wanna keep working on this and like, let's, if he'll give us the extension, then we don't have...
I'm sure he will because I think he would have to come back, you know, if he get an answer in three months or five months or whatever, now he'd have to come back and repay his application fee. At least this way he saves that two hundred bucks, right?
I'm not trying to sound devious, but can you twist MinDOT's arm a little bit? Say, hey, you're trying to pass Sixteenth Street across, you know, Highway fifty-seven over the course of the next twenty-four hours? We need to have some direction, I mean, not trying...
Depends on who you talk to. True.
Well, I'm not trying to be...
I was gonna ask him to show me the technique when he figures it out.
Charm and charisma, but... I mean, tell him, hey, we're trying to do this over the course of the next, you know, twelve, twenty-four months, whatever's reasonable in these things. And that way you get them to start thinking about it and have that conversation, hopefully a little bit earlier.
You know as well as I do, MinDOT's polled in a hundred different directions. They're gonna tell you, you're gonna be on the list.
So, I think you're better like going through your congressman and your local politicians and then your...
You're looking for the folder?
Ah, yeah. The date's on the application where we got it.
I also, I also don't know that we can do more than one extension.
No, I can only, I've only found that we can do one.
Who's the politician too that they can pull some chance?
Sinjou?
Yeah, you can only extend it for sixty days, you can't waive it totally.
Oh, or just sixty days?
Yeah, and you can only extend it once.
Okay.
Just for giggles, I got an opinion from the league. And you cannot waive it, you can't waive that right, and you can only extend it once.
Okay, so then it'd be a total of a hundred and twenty days now, correct? The first sixty days, with the, with the application and another twelve, another sixteen?
Another six, so it's only a hundred and twenty, right?
I think you could at least get an answer from MinDOT which way they would be leaning. Sixteenth or twenty-whatever it is, you could at least get that answer out of them.
When the losing sixty days are...
Just getting to sort of high on this guy, I expect a resolution to listen, I don't wanna...
Twenty-sixth day.
Everybody out the door, I know.
Right.
You could cause a lot of problems down here. I think, I think seeing what they, maybe they can give us some guidance.
I think we'd want to have the extension request.
We know they've got something looked at.
By Friday.
Yeah, I'll try and get it soon. I just want to make sure that I didn't tell him it was Monday and it could have to be Thursday or something.
Right, but we would want to have it by Friday because if we didn't have it by Friday, we would have to recommend to the council to deny it because if there's no action by the twenty-sixth, it would automatically be rezoned. So, we'll have to take action on the twenty-second, either let the extension or deny it.
Twenty-seventh is Friday?
No, the twenty-second is the council meeting, it's Wednesday, but we have to get it in the packet on Friday.
What's the seventeen, eighteen?
So, we need it Friday.
Seventeen?
Yeah, we'll need it Friday, but seventeen...
Well, St. Patrick's Day, I got it.
We need it Friday.
Get your paperwork done early.
I'm gonna be in Arizona, I'll be able to file.
I've said my piece. I'd like to hear some opinions from others.
I agree a lot with what you said, makes a lot of sense.
Well, the, the property that's east of the church and east of, I'm going back, our first name, Albert's is, anybody know who has that?
East of the church is the school. And then, um... Yeah, then, um, just to the north of that is more, or Dave Wilcox in Bagle, I think, still have that.
Oh, so is that what I'm looking at, is that soccer field on that?
Yeah.
So, they have east of Albert's is old place, so they, you know, school owns that too?
Yeah, right behind the cabin tree, yeah, and where, where Westrum was.
Yeah.
We still haven't made up that name here. Some, well, some property is going down the city, I think. That city home renovations. Thought that was a tax thing, but maybe not, I don't, I don't remember. Is that what they're trying to see this?
I, I don't know.
Thought I understood that, but maybe not.
I know some action happened out there, so... They already have a driveway, so they don't have to come in.
Yeah. So, I, I guess if everybody's in agreement, I think the next step is that we have to, what, table, table the request pending the extension received prior to the council meeting and then recommend to the council to deny it if that extension request isn't received.
That's about where we're at.
And hopefully within the next sixty days, we can get an opinion from MinDOT of what we can do. No promises.
Oh, I know.
Well, it's an important piece, really.
Yeah, I do.
It's been overlooked and, you know, maybe we'll, we can get it stirred up a little bit. We just, you know, we got a school out there, we got a church, and a trucking company. And I'm sure they're gonna have an absence there.
There're gonna be some more residences there in, within the next ten years, I'm sure.
Now, that's contradictory to the legal opinion of the, the attorney at this point, if we table it. Do we do that in two motions or one?
You wanna table the rezone and then recommend if the extension isn't received to...
By Friday at polls of business.
I think what you said was table the rezone pending the extension request, and if the extension request is not received, the recommendation is to deny.
Right.
Is that your motion?
According to the legal...
Right, I think you can make that all in one motion if that's what we make the motion.
Can we, can we add by the end of business, day Friday, so we've got a deadline?
If not received, I...
That's my motion.
Right, okay. The recommendation is to deny.
Can we repeat that?
No. So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
What's the date on that?
It's Friday, seventeen, seventeen.
Is that a second?
That's right.
A motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
We'll get there.
You know, just between this and that Highway fourteen, those are like two MinDOT P F's. I mean, they were buying right-of-way in the sixties for Highway fourteen, you know? I mean, shit, I'll be dead before you...
Make sure that makes it in the way of the minutes. Well, I think if they see the traffic count on that road, as they know about, maybe that could spur something too.
Yeah, happy St. Patrick's Day.
There you go.
Be it, Rich.
So, new business, resolutions amending conditional use permits.
Yes, so for Prairie Willow Estates fourth, there had been two conditional use permits issued, one for each of the planned unit development. And at the time of the resolution approving the planned unit development, there was a condition on each one for trail easement. And then the property that was Outlot B of Prairie Willow Estates two had a requirement to upgrade the township road. So, let's just take them one at a time, I guess. So, the resolution amending the conditional use permit to allow for a planned unit development at Outlot B Prairie Willow Estates were actually taking into account that there's adequate right-of-way provided to accommodate a future trail. So, replacing the, the condition for a trail easement with the fact that there is adequate right-of-way to provide for a future trail. And then removing the condition to upgrade the township road. The city of Cassin currently has no program in place to upgrade township roads. We do have a placeholder for a substandard road fee on our fee schedule, and the city attorney will be addressing that with the council at one of their future meetings to have a transportation improvement districts. But we have no program in place at this time. So, we would be amending that, the conditional use permit to no longer reflect the trail easements or the upgrade of the township road for the property that was Outlot B of Prairie Willow two. And then similarly for the property at fifteen hundred West Main, again, there's adequate right-of-way provided to accommodate a future trail. And the requirement was to seal the existing well. Now, there's a question if there is a well there, so it would be amended to say seal the existing well if applicable. So, those would be the two, those will be the two amendments to the conditional use permit for Prairie Willow's planned unit development.
And I would assume these are just voted upon by the council on our, in your board so far.
And these will, yeah, these will go to the council, yeah.
But you don't need anything from us in terms of...
No, no, but I do want you to be aware.
Thank you. Comprehensive plan time.
Yes, the council did approve a very large investment in a comprehensive plan at their last meeting. So, I just wanted to make sure that what you had was the timeline letting you know how the project's gonna kick off. I anticipate that the mayor will be approaching a couple of you about serving on his work group for the comprehensive plan. Or if you're particularly interested, you could let the, you could let the mayor know yourself that you would be interested in being on the working group. Who is Lenny looking at?
Sheldon.
Oh.
What's that?
Group?
Work group?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let the, I'll let the mayor know. So, I'd say just keep your eyes open, there'll be plenty of times for, opportunities for public input, including utilize some, some social media, websites, some surveys, and reaching out to the community in those ways too. Talk it up. It's gonna be a great process.
Anyone else have anything I need to discuss?
Probably to draw attention to, I think it's April sixth, the Coney Comprehensive Plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's at the school for those who are interested. That may lead into our comprehensive plan, that's the plan that they have.
Six P M in the Learning Center, is that right? Yeah.
Nothing else, couple of those meetings? Thank you all.
Thank you. You wanna leave that with me? How much do you wanna take?
No, I don't, it's hard to throw it all out.
Yeah, you should keep that.
Oh, I need to record that. Especially if somebody, you know, family could offer to present to our, to make it, to get rid of the presidential...
I'm sorry, I think the Learning Center is what I had on Facebook. To buy them out, the amateur scene. That's my most worth it.